Okay, it's on. Would the clerk please call the roll for the public hearing?
His honor, the mayor.
Here.
Counselor Unright.
Here.
Counselor Myers.
He is excused.
Counselor Todd.
Here.
Counselor Walker.
Here.
Counselor Barlow.
Here.
Counselor Van Buren.
Here.
Counselor Capelitz.
He is excused.
We have five present with two excused.
Thank you. The public hearing is regarding the proposed local law number three of the year 2014. It's a local law amending chapter 63, animals of the code of the city of Oswego, New York. We do not have anyone at this point who has signed up to address the assembly on the public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to say something behalf of this? Seeing no reason -- yes, would you like to please step up and give us your name to the microphone? Yes, ma'am. Your name and address.
My name is Diana Daisins. I live at 105 Erie Street, and I'm here in response, hopefully, that this new dog law will be passed. I am the one that was attacked. My dog was very viciously and had to be operated on, and I just trust that everyone here that is voting will pass this law. I sure would appreciate it to make it safe for others, not just my dog yet. I appreciate what you're going to do to pass the law.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else like to make a statement? Seeing none, can I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing? Counselor Walker, Counselor Van Buren, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yeah.
The public hearing is adjourned. We will wait approximately five minutes for the public session to begin at 7:15, and I will gabble the meeting together at that time.
Welcome to the public session. The mayor of Oswego County, Lieutenant 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 Lieutenant, so my name is Tom Malar. Your name is Diana Daisins. Your question is, "Would you like to talk about..." Thank you. My name is Tom Malar. I live at 80 West Fifth Street in Oswego. I was born and raised in Oswego. I went to St. Lawrence University. I have lived in California, Florida, recently worked as a merchant marine on oil tankers and oil rigs globally. I have had a company that developed the Woodruff Building on West First Street into seven market-rate apartments and four commercial spaces, one of which is Berkshire Hathaway. I have been in front of this council before, and I'm actually very happy to be back here again. This is actually a positive situation, in my opinion, that you accepted my development company's proposal to restore the former Gail's property. I'd like to give a very brief overview of the timeline in which you accepted my company as the preferred developer. Coleman's Restaurant of Oswego was closed in February 6, 2008, six years ago. The City of Oswego Community Development Office foreclosed on the property in January 7, 2010, for loan default, a full two years after the restaurant closed. The City of Oswego solicited proposals from qualified developers in July 2010. This was four and a half years ago. The Development Committee, after full RFP review, recommended Fowler-Gardella Construction, LLC, and Tom Malar Consortium as a best proposal for the property in September of 2010. Our proposal included a reuse of the Walton and Willett Stone Building as a mixed-use residential and commercial building with boat rentals and restaurant on the ground floor, first-floor level with apartments and office space on the second and third floors. At this time, all three partners in this venture gave three years of back taxes. We gave our financial statements, and we gave both letters from nonprofit organizations and two banks interested in aiding in this project. Today in the paper, the city is representing that we did not do this, and that is a misrepresentation of the facts. The common council designated Fowler-Gardella Construction and Tom Malar Consortium as a preferred developer. September 13, 2010, we received seven full votes of this council. The common council authorized the mayor to enter into the agreements with the developers June 28, 2012. We signed the option agreement. At this point, my company gave $10,000 to the city as a deposit. I ask now, as of this date, where are these funds? In October of this year, you grilled Community Development Office on the many red flags regarding the fiscal behavior, and so I simply ask, where is that money? In January 2013, the project reviewed, received Oswego Planning Board approval. We went to Planning Board and Zoning Board three separate times, got full approvals. The contract to purchase was then signed by the mayor. Around the date of September 30, 2013, my company had the balance of $190,000 in escrow and waited upon the Community Development Director to provide the deed and proper documents in order to close. After receiving emails that document the deed was not prepared by the city, we pushed to close, but then in November of 2013, City Attorney Gay Williams requested that developers show proof of their financing for the entire project before the contract of purchase-to-sale could be closed. This was not a requirement of the contract to purchase. It was after the closing date had passed that the city attorney made these requests for unnecessary documentation, to which I can only conclude at this point was to create an obstacle or stall, for whatever reason. I have remained steadfast in developing this property. I'm here to let you know that I embraced this project to the point that I met with councilmen on my ward and you, Mr. Mayor, to express to them that they were breaching our contract. That was a full year ago. I do not want to sue the city for this breach because I am a true civic-minded partner. I've been trying to work with you. This deal that has taken so many years and has deteriorated the building, as leaders of our city, I want you to look at the implications of your actions now. This behavior has set a precedent that where you shake people's hands and you vote in favor of their plans and you sign contracts with them, and if you back out, you make everyone involved look bad. That behavior hinders progress and gives the impression that you are closed to business. You made an obligation and a bond, and you have reneged on it. Briefly, I'm going to give some quick accounting of where we are today. $396,000 is owed to the city from Peter Coleman. $200,000 of my cash was not taken. I know that there was a $250,000 grant last year that is now lost to the city. There's 15 years of unpaid taxes, which if we put it at least $20,000 a year, that's $300,000 lost, and right now I have documentation estimating that if you have to take the building down, it's going to cost about $200,000. So right now, as we sit, we're looking at a $1.4 million loss. Litigation to pursue the contract made between the city and myself will not only waste taxpayers' money, but lead to even further deterioration of the建筑 building. I want to repair it. I want to take on the challenges the building presents, and my development company can do this. Right now, I have workers in Watertown starting a 27,000-square-foot building for $1.2 million. That dispels your argument that my company cannot do this. I also completed a $1.4 million building in your town. In closing, I would hope that you would contact me this week and set up a meeting to resolve this issue. I have the solution to the problems here, and all this litigation could go away, and we could all get back to work and fix this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker is Bill Cahill. Mr. Cahill.
Good evening. My name is Bill Cahill. I live at 5 Kathleen Drive in Oswego. Gentlemen, I could easily exhaust five minutes of my time giving you all the sentimental reasons why I would like to see that building remain functional and standing, but in all honesty, that would be a disservice to this time. I'm also not here to fight a battle for Tom Malar. He certainly doesn't need me to do that for him. But I'm here to remind you of a couple of things that I think that you're aware of, but maybe you just need reminding, maybe you need to be reminded of them. Number one, every action that you take or you don't take sends a message to the taxpayers. So if you're going to be in favor of historical preservation, your actions should indicate that. If you're not going to be in favor of historical preservation, I don't think that condemns you as poor civil servants. It would just be a side of that issue you come down on, but that should be communicated to the taxpayers. It's a piece of public property now, and the fact of the matter is, if, and certainly, I'm getting my information, like most taxpayers, you know, from the newspaper or from, you know, news sources on the web. So I don't pretend to stand here and say that I've got all the information that you gentlemen do. And now that it's in litigation, nobody's talking about it, and that either could be looked at as unfortunate, or it could be looked at as convenient, depending on what side of this issue you're on. The fact of the matter is, or at least as I see it, the city hasn't done a great deal, maybe even very little, to keep that building from getting to the point that it's at. I'm told it might not be salvageable. It's just there's no discussion to be had of what you're going to do with it. It might have to come down. If that's the way it goes, that's not on Tom Malar. That's on the city. I haven't seen the city do anything to keep that building from getting in the shape that it's in. So what message does that send to the taxpayers? Well, it's not a priority for us. If saving that building was a priority, and this goes back to previous administrations, something would have been done by now. Where there's a will, there's a way. I've seen amazing things happen in this room, and I know that if it was a real priority, something would be done. The other message you're communicating to the public, who picks up the newspapers, maybe somebody who wants to develop, an Oswigonian, somebody from outside the city, is how attractive is our city to come and do business in? I'm sure you and Mr. Malar have very different points of view on this, about who's the good guy, who's the bad guy. The fact of the matter is, it is a bit of a mess. It's on the front page of the paper. If I was someone looking to invest in such a property, I'd have to think twice about it. And if I was going to invest, and I wanted to walk away from it, what about the money that hasn't been recouped from the previous owner? Almost if the number is accurate, almost $400,000 you're owed by a previous developer, that's a pretty healthy chunk of change to people that have just had their taxes raised 40-plus percent. So I haven't read, I'm not saying it's not going on, but I haven't read anything in the paper where the city is actively trying to recoup that money. So are we going to drive developers out, or send the message that if you do do business, you can walk away and not have to pay your debt to the city? I think they're both poor messages. So I appreciate your time, appreciate your service to the city, but right now, you've got a bit of a mess on your hands, and I would hope that the mayor and the council, I know once it goes to litigation, it gets a bit messy, but I also know that you can get to a solution to this sooner than later, if that's truly the goal of everybody here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Austin Willock. Mr. Willock.
Thank you for the opportunity, mayor and councilors. I am at 44 West Bridge Street. Operation Oswego County is an economic developer, also president of Heritage Foundation of Oswego County at 143 West Third Street, and also do property management for multiple other properties, incubators, and other businesses throughout the city of Oswego and the county. One major thing I wanted to bring up today is that there, in recent years, there's been a great renaissance and reinvestment in historic buildings in the city of Oswego. The Stevedore Lofts Project, the Seaway Lofts Project, Woodruff Building that Tom mentioned, there's been multiple, there's been millions and millions of dollars poured into the city of Oswego and the reinvestment of these properties on waterfront and off the waterfront. And I think that the neglect of this property going further and will send a bad message to other developers looking at developing in the city of Oswego and to the residents that the city is not fully on board with the redevelopment that's going on, mostly through private investment. So I could say a lot of other things. I know there's other people that want to speak, so I'll leave it at that and let other people make their comments as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker is Paul Stewart. Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, mayor and councilors. Just a question or an observation I have as a resident living near there and reading the papers and talking to our neighbors, I think the mistrust centers around, we're looking at a choice between somebody who has a chance of rehabbing this property, although I understand the city does not have full confidence that that will happen, but there's a chance that that will happen, versus an alternative which is vapor. I don't know what the alternatives are. I've asked two different city officials whether there are offers in on for the property. I've gotten different answers, no and yes. So my first question is, is are there alternatives for this property aside from this proposal We can't answer during public --
Yes.
Okay, okay, understood. Well, I think that that's probably where the frustration from some of the public comes from, is because when looking at the potential for this building to be rehabilitated versus an unknown, that makes it difficult. Speaking for myself, one of the great things about this city is its historic buildings, without question. To let that building deteriorate would be a tragedy. Whatever the proposals are you're looking at, I would hope that you would be in favor of those that are interested in restoring that building and making Oswego proud. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Next speaker is Ms. Mercedes Neese.
My name is Mercedes Neese. I live at 128 Erie Street, and I'm here to support the Cahill Building, one of the oldest buildings in our community and an important, sorry, bifocals aren't working here, and an important part of what makes the Oswego waterfront look like Oswego. In the 2020 plan, a document that had input from hundreds and hundreds of city residents, it's very clear that the community prefers visions of their community that include historic structures rather than big box buildings. Matter of fact, most communities choose a historic vision over the standard run-of-the-mill building. Tearing down a historic building in many cases just leaves a blank lot, a gaping mouth with missing teeth. In today's world, there are many places that are reinventing themselves by repurposing their historic sites at this time, as Austin mentioned, even here. We have visited some of these communities, or if they've come here and presented to us. There was Keene, New York, Cumberland, Maryland, Paducah, Kentucky, and yes, even Buffalo and Syracuse. Oswego and its residents deserve a waterfront with one of its few remaining historic buildings. It deserves a beautiful library in a historic building, a well-maintained city hall, et cetera. Our residents are worthy of the investment that the city may need to make in this significant national register building. It represents a celebration of who we are. I'm here to ask what we can do to protect the building now, not wait until after whatever resolution happens with this lawsuit or whatever other opportunity is found. The city is the owner of the building, and so it is, the onus is on the city to do something about it at this time. I believe residents willing to help, I have my checkbook, and willing to contribute in some way to this cause, many small donations can make a large impact. My question is, can we tarp the roof? I understand that Linsley Roofing was to do some patching. They're a fantastic roofing company. I'm sure they wouldn't do anything that would jeopardize their staff or their employees. They are very professional. The building is suffering while we wait to make a decision, so how can we help? Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Victoria Usherwood.
Good evening. I'm Victoria Usherwood. Galinas, I live at 102 Sheldon Ave. I also have a business at 29 West Seneca, so I'm around the building quite a bit. I'm here just as a resident tonight, just to remind folks that whatever Tom Malar's plan is, and I don't know what it is, and I'm sure it's wonderful, whatever it is, they usually are, he cannot do any worse for that building than what's currently happening to it. He could only enhance it, and there really isn't a good enough reason, at least maybe until today, that he shouldn't be allowed to pursue it. And if the contract is as he states, that a signed contract was put in place with a purchase offer that did not include the remaining funds to complete a project, then you should honor the agreement. We really do have to honor the things that we say that we will do. On top of that, there is a historic significance to that building for pretty much everyone in the room. We all love it. We all have a history with it. We don't want to lose it. We're asking you, please, do everything you can, including giving the project to Tom, or whatever it takes to maintain that building in upright form and usable. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make a statement? Let me make one comment.
I have one from a resident. Someone else?
I'm sorry, we have someone out here. Yes, ma'am. Yes, please.
Yes, my name is Helen Zagan. I live at 63 Hillcrest Drive. I'm here to say that this building is the oldest commercial building in Oswego. It was constructed in 1828. It has held offices of the U.S. Customs. It has held offices of the Oswego Palladium Times. It has held a ship chancellery. It has held a number of businesses over the years, and I think that there is absolutely no reason why we should let this building disappear. I think we should do absolutely everything we can to save it and to restore it, and there's no reason to build another building that looks like every other building on every highway in the United States. That's silly. Let's make the best we can out of the unique features of the town of Oswego and make us all proud. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I recognize Counselor Todd, I have been asked to make a statement to the fact that this is pending litigation, and so as city government, we really don't have a comment to make. We've heard, listened to your opinions, and I understand Counselor Todd wants to make a comment as a resident.
A resident called me this morning. She was out of town, so she sent an email that she wanted read to the record. My name is Nancy Sporino. I live at 193 West First Street, Oswego, New York. I realize time is limited at this meeting, but I'm in Pennsylvania for the month of November, and I would like my opinion to be heard. I was born and raised in Oswego and intend to spend the rest of my life here. I believe it is extremely important to preserve what's left of our beautiful city by preserving what we have left of our historic buildings. The Cahill's Building is one of our oldest remaining structures, and I believe everything that can be done should be done to preserve this historically significant building. So many Oswagonians have memories and personal bonds of this building that should count for something in the grand scheme of things. Too many of our historic buildings and areas have fallen to parking lots and worse. It's time to realize that we have to change the way we're thinking if we're going to maintain and restore the reputation Oswego once had. The beginning of this destruction started with urban renewal, which did nothing but take the beauty and historic value of Oswego. We can't correct that wrong, but we can change what happens to our city in the future. As we look around and we see restoration of First Street, we know is Oswego Commons, and many local merchants restoring their storefronts. There are trees being planted. A new playground is being built. Wonderful pride-filling projects, but we shouldn't forget the beauty of our historic past and what further steps we can take. Let's make a change. Let's start doing things even better from this point on. Let's make every effort to restore the city's beautiful areas to the way they once were in addition to what we've already done. Oswego is a potential be a beautiful resort community. We must continue down the road to making this happen. Saving what we have left of our heritage with some of the earliest structures is part of that. Furthermore, letting our older and perhaps historic properties be sold to organizations that do not contribute to the tax base does not help the resources we need to accomplish our work. We must save the Cahill's Building. To many Oswagonians, it's an important step in preserving what we are most proud of. Oswego we grew up in and continue to live in, and we believe it should be preserved for future generations of Oswagonians and visiting guests. Thank you for your time, Nancy Sporino.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments from anyone here this evening? All right, then I will conclude the public session and will now rise from the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands.
To the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
The clerk, please call the roll.
His honor, the mayor.
Here.
Counselor Unright.
Here.
Counselor Myers.
He is excused.
Counselor Todd.
Here.
Counselor Walker.
Here.
Counselor Barlow.
Here.
Counselor Van Buren.
Here.
Counselor Capelitz.
He is excused.
We have five present with two excused.
Thank you. Under the mayor's report, first I'd like to thank --
A little out, isn't it?
I'd like to thank everyone for coming and voicing their opinions. I do have a few comments, and we do, I would ask for a moment of silence. We lost one of our residents this week who worked for the city. It's J. Michael Parker, Sr., passed away on November 6. He had worked for the city of Oswego from 1972 to 2001 as our real property appraiser and as city assessor from 2001 until the end of 2008, when he retired. Our sympathy is extended to his family and his many friends, and I would ask for a moment Thank you. As everyone knows, the budget is, it's that time of the year, we had a very strained year last year reviewing the budget. I have rolled out my proposed budget to the council. We will be discussing it in meetings later this month, Tuesday, November 18, Wednesday, November 19, and Friday, November 21. It's open to the public. We appreciate any insight or input you could provide. I did create a budget message for the council members, which I will read. Dear council members, the proposed fiscal year 2015 budget for the city of Oswego, New York, is hereby submitted for your consideration. The fiscal year 2015 proposed budget is $43,316,588 for all funds, an increase of 1.407% compared to the original fiscal year 2014 budget of $42,59,851. This reflects an increase of $1,256,737. This increase is due primarily to retirement, healthcare costs, and contractual raises. In 2014, we committed to acknowledging the financial reality of a slow economy and the rising expenses that our city had to deal with. This proved to be very unpopular, but it was the responsible thing to do. The practice of avoiding making tough financial decisions over the years had placed our city in a financially vulnerable situation. The economy of the city of Oswego has begun to emerge from the overall financial malaise experienced throughout our country. We begin 2015 with a continuing challenge of controlling our spending as well as a strong commitment to growing revenue and improving the quality of life for our residents. Our current consent decree has placed a significant financial hardship on every one of our residents. It is our moral duty, as well as a legal mandate, that we provide a safe and clean environment for all residents of our city, and I'm happy to state that there will be no increase in the enterprise fund rate for 2015. That means there will be no increase in water or sewer rates. 2015 requested tax rate requires an increase of 1.07%. This translates into an annual tax increase of 20 cents for $1,000 of assessed property value. A typical home with an assessed property value of $70,000, which is a good watermark for the city of Oswego, would see an annual increase in their taxes of $20 a year, or roughly $1.17 a month. On a continuing positive note, there are no layoffs or any loss of services to our residents. The traditional practice of downsizing and the underfunding of equipment repair and replacement over the past decade in lieu of raising taxes has resulted in a diminution of the very services that our residents count on and define us as a community. And I want to thank the department heads for the timely submissions of their requests, and I especially want to thank our city chamberlain, Mrs. Deborah Code, for her knowledge -- and I especially want to thank our city chamberlain, Mrs. Deborah Code, for her knowledge, professionalism, and comprehensive preparation of the attached budget proposal. Thanks also to Counselors Ronald Kaplowitz and Eric Van Buren for their invaluable input and support of the document. As proud Oswigonians, we all celebrate our spectacular natural resources, our historic past, and our bright future. But in fact, our greatest resource has always been and always will be the people of Oswego themselves. We believe that while we will have many challenges ahead of us, we will deal with them as the Oswego families have always done for generations, with strength and a total commitment to our strong family values. And it is with pride in our accomplishment and our people that I, Thomas Gillan, as mayor, submit the proposed city of Oswego 2015 operating budget to the common council for consideration. Thank you. Gentlemen, it is an honor to serve with you. So that is the budget message that we will discuss the budget. We can edit it, but I wanted people to know that this is not last year. The budget increase is well under the 2% tax cap that the governor has requested from us and well under the 5% that people cited was the ceiling for that. So that is that, and we will be, we'll keep you updated. Under the press, we'll be informing you of progress there. I'd also like to congratulate Mr. McLaughlin. There you are, for his election to the position of Counsel of the Second Ward. For Dorton, Pat. Counselor Myers is not with us tonight, and I want to commend him for what his services to the city over the last quite a few years. He's been a good friend to our city. Tomorrow, Tuesday, is Veterans Day, and the Veterans Council of Oswego will hold its annual Veterans Day ceremony at the Veterans Memorial at West Linear Park at 11:00. I will be there, and I hope as many of you folks can be there as well to recognize our veterans and the real heroes of our country, the ones who put their life and limb in jeopardy so we can have freedom to do what we're doing this evening. So that is all I have from the mayor's report. Is there anyone, any counselors have any reports, any comments? Seeing none, will the clerk please call Resolution 479?
Resolution 479 would approve the minutes of the common council meeting held October 27th, 2014.
Counselor Van Buren. Counselor Enright. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Enright. Counselor Todd. Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yeah.
The resolution passes 502.
Please call Resolution 480.
Resolution 480 would approve the use of public space at the request of Oswego State University for improvements and signs at the entrances of the campus.
Counselor Enright. Counselor Barlow. Any discussion? Counselor Todd.
I think the folks here are like, they're trying to get some kind of -- I'm going to sit down to help them. Pick some of the problems we have with the students as they come into the city at night. We have been refused every single time that we've asked for that. Most of the time, we don't even get our phone calls returned. Now, every other business person in the city of Oswego that has to come before planning and zoning, we hear complaints constantly from them about what a difficult process it is to go through and what happens to them if they don't follow that process exclusively. What this next item is, number 480, is in response to a phone call that we received that the college had taken it upon themselves to go out on city-owned property and erect large concrete walls and signposts without coming to the council, the planning board, zoning board, historical review committee, or any of the other hundreds of committees that people have to go through and be burdened with if they're just an average citizen or an average business person. And they did it all on their own without asking for any help, and were rather indignant when we told them that they couldn't just do that. I'm not exactly happy that that's the way they continue to do business. I myself am not going to support this. If it were up to me, they'd have to tear them all down and start the process all over again and have to do it the same way every other business person that every single person in this council floor tells them that they have to follow it by. And every time a resident comes here and they have to follow that, and we tell them they have to follow those rules, I think the college, who thinks it's above them and beneath them, have to come before us and come ask for those permissions. I ask everybody on the council to vote this down, and let's start this process all over again and force them to the table so that they can come have to follow every single rule when it comes to everything else that everybody in the city has to follow that they don't believe that they have to. I'm asking everybody on this council to vote this down and make them start this process all over because we make every single business person and every other resident in the city jump through these hoops. And they went through every single bit of this project behind the scenes and behind doors, and were indignant when we told them we couldn't do it. I'm going to be voting no on this, and I ask everybody else on the council to vote no, too.
Any other comments from the council? Counselor Enright.
I can understand what you're telling me, but I've been out there these times and I don't think this is the time to pick a fight. I'm going to support this, pick a fight, and improve it, but I believe the message is probably that the process is running out of the future if any of this type of constructive work happens happening. You also would like to --
Thanks, sir. Counselor Todd.
So if we get a business owner that hasn't done this before, are we going to give them the same opportunities and stuff? Because we just drove a business out of my ward because the historical review committee didn't approve of their color scheme. So I'm just trying to figure, and the reason they left was because they painted it without going before the historical review committee, and the historical review committee tried to shut them down. So we, as a council, told them, yeah, you might as well leave because we're not going to back you. But when it comes to the college, we're going to turn around and do this. And now every single person in here has had a business owner or a resident come before them and tell them about what a difficult process it is to try and get a business going or to try and do any kind of work at all to their house, and we make them follow the same rules and the same letters every single time. But the college can just ignore us and just do whatever they want. I'm not arguing that it looks good. I'm saying that they didn't follow the process, and we've said clearly on this council since January, we're going to make everybody follow the same rules. And if we don't make these people follow the same rules that everybody else had to, we're pretty much saying to everybody, ah, you guys have to follow the rules, but the college doesn't. I'm going to vote this down again because if we're saying everybody has to follow the same rules, then that means everybody, including the college.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Walker.
Thank you. I have a question. Why didn't they come to the, go to the planning board, zoning board? You know, this just got thrown at us last week, and is there any answers for us?
No, just a lot to. Counselor Van Buren.
I believe they thought operating in the state agency didn't have to. I will say that that doesn't prove that somebody came before us with board authority as well as, I believe, the moral word, the policy of the county that's around for disabled homes. Another state agency is running that, and they also came before us. I think it's well documented that state agencies also have to follow this process regardless of the jurisdiction that they have. Board's done it, especially for their large project, which was mainly the Second Ward. They made sure that they came before us. I don't think this is any different. Did that answer your question? You look more confused.
Well, I'm just saying, why didn't we catch it while it was going on? Where was our people? When were they out there?
Well, we did, we stopped it.
There was a stop work order issued when we discovered that the work was being done. Counselor Todd called me to go on site.
They're very unhappy about it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Counselors? None? Please call the roll.
Counselor Enright.
Yeah.
Counselor Todd.
No.
Counselor Walker.
No.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
No.
The resolution is defeated 232.
Will the clerk please call Resolution 481?
Resolution 481 would accept a donation of a park bench to be placed in Brightback Park in memory of Thad I. Rizzo.
Counselor Todd. Counselor Walker. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Enright.
Yeah.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yeah.
The resolution passes 502.
Please call Resolution 482.
Resolution 482 would accept a donation of a park bench to be placed in Brightback Park in memory of Eileen Omara Godzilla, Anne Omara Desio, and Mary Omara.
Counselor Walker. Counselor Enright. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Enright.
Yeah.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yeah.
The resolution passes 502.
Please call Resolution 483.
Resolution 483 would accept a donation of 80 trees from the Oswego Renaissance Association.
Counselor Enright. Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Enright.
Yeah.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yeah.
The resolution passes 502.
Please call Resolution 483.
Resolution 483 would accept a donation of 80 trees from the Oswego Renaissance Association.
Counselor Enright. Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yeah.
The resolution passes 502.
Please call Resolution 484.
Resolution 484 would approve proposed local law number 3 of the year 2014, a local law amending Chapter 63, animals of the code of the city of Oswego, New York.
Counselor Todd.
Counselor Barlow.
Any discussion?
Counselor Barlow. Thank you. This is an incident, as mentioned earlier, that happened in my ward. And what happened was the same dog attacked twice, same animal in the same neighborhood attacked twice. So we looked through the law, back through the dog law, and our animal control officer, Carrie, put this amendment or adjustment together for this law. And when we look back after those attacks, we realized that we were maybe missing some things in our law. So this will make my neighborhood better where this happened, and I just want to thank Carrie for her help on this law. I would appreciate the support of the rest of the council.
Thank you. Any other comments? Counselor Walker.
Thank you. Just wanted to tell you, I'm going to support this 100%. Five years ago, my daughter got bit by a pit bull, I'll say, and I tried to do something like this, but it was, I was pinpointing one breed, and you can't do that in New York State. So I'm glad these people came up with this resolution, and I'm going to support this 100%. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other comments? Counselor Enright.
I have some, I'm sorry, I'm talking to my father, and I keep on, although this is going on, we thank you for, yeah, for the --
Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yeah.
The resolution passes 502.
Please call Resolution 485.
Resolution 485 would authorize the public hearing regarding city of Oswego Housing Choice Voucher Program Five-Year Plan for 2015 through 2019.
Counselor Walker. Counselor Van Buren. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Enright.
Yeah.
Counselor Todd.
No.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yeah.
The resolution passes 502.
Please call Resolution 485.
Resolution 485 would authorize the public hearing regarding city of Oswego Housing Choice Voucher Program Five-Year Plan for 2015 through 2019.
Counselor Walker. Counselor Van Buren. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Enright.
Yeah.
Counselor Todd.
No.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yeah.
The resolution passes 412.
Please call Resolution 486.
Resolution 486 would authorize the mayor to enter into a three-year renewal contract with Romer, Wallens, Gold, and Manu LLP for legal services for labor relations.
Counselor Van Buren. Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yeah.
The resolution passes 502.
Please call Resolution 489.
Resolution 489 would authorize the mayor to sign engineering design services agreement with GHD Consulting Engineers LLC for the sanitary sewer rehabilitation area two sewer investigations project.
Counselor Enright. Counselor Van Buren. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Enright.
Yeah.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yeah.
The resolution passes 502.
Please call Resolution 487.
Resolution 487 would authorize the mayor to execute a one-year renewal agreement with the county of Oswego for weights and measures services for the year 2015.
Counselor Barlow. Counselor Van Buren. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Enright.
Yeah.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yeah.
The resolution passes 502.
Please call Resolution 488.
Resolution 488 would authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with the county of Oswego through the Oswego City County Youth Bureau for reimbursement from the AmeriCorps grant.
Counselor Van Buren. Counselor Barlow. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Enright.
Yeah.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yeah.
The resolution passes 502.
Please call Resolution 489.
Resolution 489 would authorize the mayor to sign engineering design services agreement with GHD Consulting Engineers LLC for the sanitary sewer rehabilitation area two sewer investigations project.
Counselor Enright. Counselor Van Buren. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Enright.
Yeah.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yeah.
The resolution passes 502.
Please call Resolution 490.
Resolution 490 would approve a transfer of funds from within the Department of Public Works.
Counselor Walker. Counselor Barlow. Any discussion? Please call the roll. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Enright?
Yeah.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yeah.
The resolution passes 502.
Please call Resolution 491.
Resolution 491 would approve a transfer of funds from within the high dam hydroelectric facility account.
Counselor Enright?
Yeah.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yeah.
The resolution passes 502.
Please call Resolution 492.
Resolution 492 is a motion to remove Resolution Number 432 dated October 14th, 2014, from the table.
Counselor Van Buren? One second. Counselor Enright? Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Enright? Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yeah.
The resolution passes 502.
Please call Resolution 493.
Resolution 493 would authorize a public hearing regarding city of Oswego climate action plan.
Counselor Van Buren? And Counselor Enright? Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Enright?
Yeah.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yeah.
The resolution passes 502.
Please call Resolution 497.
Resolution 497 would approve a transfer of funds from within the high dam hydroelectric facility account.
Counselor Van Buren? Counselor Enright? Any discussion? Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yeah.
The resolution passes 502.
Please call Resolution 497.
Resolution 497 would approve a transfer of funds from within the high dam hydroelectric facility account.
Counselor Van Buren? Counselor Enright? Any discussion? Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yeah.
The resolution passes 502.
Please call Resolution 495.
Resolution 495 would authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Oswego Beverage Company LLC doing business as Eagle Beverage Company to provide water and wastewater treatment services.
Counselor Enright and Counselor Van Buren? Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Enright?
Yeah.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yeah.
The resolution passes 502.
Please call Resolution 496.
Resolution 496 would grant permission to the Oswego Minor Hockey Association to place temporary locker room facilities at the Cullen and Ice Ring.
Counselor Todd? Counselor Enright? Any discussion? Counselor Van Buren?
We had done this last year for the tournament, it worked out very well. I gave the citizens and the government area, the main floor open for guests and family and spectators. I appreciate them bringing this back and doing anything. They handle all of the setup and take down, working in favor of the electricity and power units.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Counselor Enright?
Yeah.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yeah.
The resolution passes 502.
Please call Resolution 497.
Resolution 497 would approve a transfer of funds from within the high dam hydroelectric facility account.
Counselor Van Buren? Counselor Enright? Any discussion? Counselor Walker?
Can we just approve this? 490 and 497, same thing, isn't it?
It was.
Counselor Van Buren?
It was to be a part of the last one, which was actually made into the agenda item for committee, so we had to pull it onto the board.
Okay.
It was to be included.
Okay.
From the same deal.
Okay.
From the same thing, Sheldon.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Counselors? Please call the roll.
Counselor Enright?
Yeah.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.